Moonlight on your skin It's a silver fire Every move you make fuels my desire You whisper love like the ocean's tune And pull me closer beneath that pale blue moon Moonlight fever got me burning slow Every step you take I can't let go Your love's away, I just can't leave Moonlight fever, baby, make me believe Your hands paint shadows on this midnight floor The more I taste, the more I want more The night's a spell and I'm hypnotized By the way you shine in those midnight eyes Moonlight fever got me burning slow Every step you take I can't let go Your love's away, I just can't leave Moonlight fever, baby, make me believe Stay till the dawn, keep the magic near Let's ride this fever till the stars disappear Moonlight fever got me burning slow Every step you take I can't let go Your love's away, I just can't leave Moonlight fever, baby, make me believe Neon signs flicker on a Saturday night You walked in slow, caught me in your sight Glass in your hand, danger in your smile Baby, I chase you for a thousand miles Whiskey kiss blues got me stumbling deep One taste of you and I can't sleep Burns like fire, smooth like gin Whiskey kiss blues, take me in You lean on the bar, shadows on your face That perfume drips like a warm embrace Your voice is low like a midnight hymn Pull me closer, let the night begin Whiskey kiss blues got me stumbling deep One taste of you and I can't sleep Burns like fire, smooth like gin Whiskey kiss blues, take me in Baby, don't stop, let's make it last Sip it slow till the night's all passed Whiskey kiss blues got me stumbling deep One taste of you and I can't sleep Burns like fire, smooth like gin Whiskey kiss blues, take me in You move like midnight through an empty street Every step's a promise I can't defeat Eyes like whiskey, voice like sin Velvet trouble, let the night begin Velvet trouble wrapped around my mind You're the kind of danger I can't leave behind Soft as a whisper, sharp as a blade Velvet trouble, the best mistake I made Your shadow dances in the neon glow Every little secret you let me know You break the rules, you write your own Velvet trouble, I can't let go Velvet trouble wrapped around my mind You're the kind of danger I can't leave behind Soft as a whisper, sharp as a blade Velvet trouble, the best mistake I made Baby, you're fire in a silk disguise One look burns right through my eyes Velvet trouble wrapped around my mind You're the kind of danger I can't leave behind Soft as a whisper, sharp as a blade Velvet trouble, the best mistake I made Under the cherry moon, I feel your flame Every touch of yours calls my name Your eyes shine like whiskey glass One taste of you I can't let pass Cherry moon fever, burn in my soul Under your spell, I lose control Every night, I fall for you deeper Cherry moon fever, sweet and steeper Your voice hums low like midnight rain Every note takes away my pain Your hands write songs across my skin Baby, this fever won't let me in Cherry moon fever, burn in my soul Under your spell, I lose control Every night, I fall for you deeper Cherry moon fever, sweet and steeper One kiss from you, I can't come down You're my high in this little town Cherry moon fever, burn in my soul Under your spell, I lose control Every night, I fall for you deeper Cherry moon fever, sweet and steeper Velvet nights, whiskey in my glass Your shadow moves slow, watching me pass Eyes like secrets I can't define Pull me closer till you're all that's mine Velvet whiskey dreams, pour another round Every kiss lifts me off the ground In this haze, nothing's what it seems Drowning deep in velvet whiskey dreams You light my soul like a neon flame Every word, a dangerous game The band plays slow, we move as one Two hearts burning till the night is done Velvet whiskey dreams, pour another round Every kiss lifts me off the ground In this haze, nothing's what it seems Drowning deep in velvet whiskey dreams Don't wake me up, don't break the spell I'm where I want, in your hotel house Velvet whiskey dreams, pour another round Every kiss lifts me off the ground In this haze, nothing's what it seems Drowning deep in velvet whiskey dreams Sugar on my lips, whiskey in my veins Every sip burns Every sip burns But it numbs the pain You left me cold But I'm still warm inside This sweet poison keeps me alive tonight Sugar whiskey blues Running through my soul Every drop takes me Somewhere I can't control I'm lost in the fire I'm lost in the truth Drowning my heart in Sugar whiskey blues Your voice still lingers In the smoke-filled air Like a ghost I can't touch But I feel everywhere The bar lights fade My heart starts to sway With every shot I drift further away Sugar whiskey blues Running through my soul Every drop takes me Somewhere I can't control I'm lost in the fire I'm lost in the truth Drowning my heart in Sugar whiskey blues Every tear Tastes like bourbon red Every kiss Was a sweet, slow pain Sugar whiskey blues Running through my soul Every drop takes me Somewhere I can't control I'm lost in the fire I'm lost in the truth Drowning my heart in Sugar whiskey blues Crimson silk nights Wrap around my skin Every move pulls me deeper in Your eyes are fire Your lips taste like sin I can't stop falling Where do I begin? Crimson silk nights Tangled in your sway Every heartbeat takes my breath away In the shadows Love cuts like a knife Crimson silk nights You're my sweet vice in life Your touch is warm But your heart's ice cold Still I chase the story we've never told The city sleeps while our world burns bright In this bed of silk I lose the fight Crimson silk nights Tangled in your sway Every heartbeat takes my breath away In the shadows Love cuts like a knife Crimson silk nights You're my sweet vice in life Every whisper pulls me to the flame Even if I never learn your name Crimson silk nights Tangled in your sway Every heartbeat takes my breath away In the shadows Love cuts like a knife Crimson silk nights You're my sweet vice in life Red satin dress swinging under the light Every step you take cuts deep tonight The crowd leans in, they can feel the flame You play this game But I don't know your name Red satin rhythm beating in my soul You've got the night under your control Every sway pulls me deeper in I'm lost forever in that red satin rhythm Your eyes say trouble, your lips say sin And baby, I'm ready to dive right in The band keeps playing, but I only hear The sound of your heart pounding in my ear Red satin rhythm beating in my soul You've got the night under your control Every sway pulls me deeper in I'm lost forever in that red satin rhythm Don't stop now, keep the fire high Let's dance till the morning steals the sky Red satin rhythm beating in my soul You've got the night under your control Every sway pulls me deeper in I'm lost forever in that red satin rhythm Velvet moons Shadows dance on your skin Every curve pulls my soul right in The night hums low With your sweet breath I'm a sinner lost In love's caress Velvet moon shadows hiding our sin Wrapped in your arms where I begin Every kiss feels like forever Velvet moon shadows We burn together The streetlight fades The world stands still Your touch runs deep It bends my will The night wraps us In a secret flame And I can't stop Calling your name Velvet moon shadows hiding our sin Wrapped in your arms where I begin Every kiss feels like forever Velvet moon shadows We burn together In the shadows I find my light Only you can make wrong feel right Velvet moon shadows hiding our sin Wrapped in your arms where I begin Every kiss feels like forever Velvet moon shadows Burn together Sweet like honey But you burn like fire Every look pulls me higher And higher In the midnight air, I taste your scent. I'm drowning slow and I can't swim. Midnight honey heat running through my veins. Every touch drives me insane. Can't break free from this sweet defeat. You got me lost in midnight, honey. Your lips drip gold, but they cut like steel. Every kiss burns, but it feels so real. The moonlight dances on your skin tonight. I'm trapped in your flame and it feels so right. Midnight honey heat running through my veins. Every touch drives me insane. Can't break free from this sweet defeat. You got me lost in midnight, honey. I trade my soul for another taste. Even if I burn, hurt, I won't escape. Midnight honey heat running through my veins. Every touch drives me insane. Can't break free from this sweet defeat. You got me lost in midnight, honey. You're sweet as sugar, but you burn like flame. Every move you make drives me insane. I breathe you in like that midnight smoke. Baby, you're the fire in every word I spoke. Sugar smoke blues rolling through my mind. Got me twisted up. One of a kind. Can't let go. I don't wanna lose. I'm hooked forever on these sugar smoke blues. Your touch is honey, but your love is wild. I'm lost in your game like a reckless child. The night's still young, but my soul feels old. With every kiss, you turn my blues to gold. Sugar smoke blues rolling through my mind. Got me twisted up. One of a kind. Can't let go. I don't wanna lose. I'm hooked forever on these sugar smoke blues. One more taste, I'll never be free. This sweet addiction's all I need. Sugar smoke blues rolling through my mind. Got me twisted up. One of a kind. Can't let go. I don't wanna lose. I'm hooked forever on these sugar smoke blues.